Okay, sounds good. It's not a way of this. It's just recommendation. Okay, cool. Yeah, no, that sounds good. Thank you so much for touching it.
Where's the next trip on the country?
That's a little warmer.
Yes.
How often are you traveling now?
As often as I can. I try to be here. But I mean, I think I'm gonna miss two meetings this year.
All right. That's well, that's pretty good.
Next week if he's gone, we'll take photos.
Yeah. Yeah, oh my God.
That's right. Nick, it's gonna stink. When do you leave?
Thirsty, week of thirsty.
Oh, so you'll still get some of the coal?
Yeah, oh yeah. Happens soon.
Yeah. How does that, I'm assuming it affects the birds in that area?
Here, I mean, I've got bird feeders and they just. Girls, I had my giant squirrels in the backyard. It's summer down there, always warm down there. I don't know what the temperature.
Yeah.
Looking that up.
Are you going for a specific bird or just general?
Just general. Which doggone makes a trip every year.
Hey, would you mind?
Sure. San Diego or South Texas.
Sure you don't.
Would you go to San Diego just for birds?
Just, we did something on the coast, we went down actually to.
That's for one information?
Yeah. The water, the.
There's.
What's it called? The estuary?
Yeah, estuary. And then up to the.
Be nine dollars to go to the park.
That I unfortunately do believe.
This trip is a little different because it's. More expensive. Balls. But San Diego did too. Did also travel with groups of friends. Last trip to Ecuador in November. I organized it.
There you go. All right, well, we've got a quorum and it's three oh one, so call the meeting order. Um, we don't have any public comments or announcements. Uh, we will move right to the approval of minutes. Uh, have everybody had a chance to review the December ninth? Meeting minutes? Any comments? Yes.
On page three.
Uh huh.
We're talking about is girdling not circle. Or not economical. We girdle it by cutting around the park. That's, that's good.
Okay.
Otherwise I'd move to.
Got a motion, do we get a second?
Second.
Take a profile. Uh, any other comments? All right. All of the favor? All right. I'll do the post same time. Okay. Meeting minutes are approved. Um, we've got a new item for consideration. We've got, uh, some plaques. Uh, can we have James Quint and Mary Lou come on up the chair?
You don't believe James Quint is actually, um, here for it was either one or the other.
Okay.
Miss Mary Lou is here.
Mary Lou? Uh, you'll come to the front and just share with us your name, address, and then, um. Let me speak on, uh.
Plaque's one.
On the plaque from Billy the Kid and Catherine McCarty?
We're hearing you, so that doesn't always mean I can hear. Sorry about that. Mary Lou Rivers Frye, sixty twenty seven North Riddian Wichita, Kansas. Uh, I am the treasurer of the Greenway Alliance. The Greenway Alliance basically has been part of Ford ever since the first five oh one C three. Ford was formed for part of the park department. We had raised funds and held funding for the park department for. Since the Ford Botanical was built. Uh, and I've been the treasurer for the last ten years probably. Anyway, we, part of our money, uh, we, uh, so many people, history people also. So many people like to know the history about Wichita, about things kind of in and around the park department. We've installed a number of plaques on a foundation that the park department has made and set up. Uh, there's one for the mulberry tree over at the Sonic Hall. Uh, there's one down at the Union Station. Uh, there's one up by, uh. The, uh, yeah, well, railroad tracks up by the. The arena, I'm sorry. Uh. And that one would like moved because it was on property owned by one of our members. Uh, he has died and his family has sold it. And I, it's hanging on a wall and I have concerns that if somebody comes in sometimes and decides to take out that patio, it will disappear. I would like to work with the county and put it across the street kind of in one of their flower beds. It talks about where, uh, the holding pens were for cattle as they came into Wichita. Uh, we have one marking Jesse Chisholm's home base, uh, up near Twenty First and the, and the Canal Route. Uh, so they're scattered around town. So many things took place, uh, in the Delano area at near, at near McLean and Douglas. Um, I would bet most of you have heard about the running of the Doves. Uh, that was an event that, uh, two of the bars put on. They loaded the girls, the dance hall girls into a wagon and hauled them down the riverbank of what would become McLean. Uh, this was on a Sunday afternoon when all the wonderful people were across this river having picnics. The girls stepped off of the, off of the wagon, disrobed and run back to the Douglas Street Bridge. The running of the Doves. Uh, it's been reenacted not being naked close to several times. We also have one for, uh, where Rowdy Joe and Redbeard's, uh, bars were located. Uh, lots of people thinks that they were pretty much at the corner of McLean and Douglas, they were not. They were at least fifty yards back from there. They were close enough. You could reach out a hand and shake hands through two of the windows on each side. Um, the suggestion has been for it to be, for those to be up closer to the apartment complex. Uh, there's some.
Areas.
In there that it could, they could be put in. Uh, the other is the shooting. Uh, the gunfight of Rowdy Joe and Redbeard that was on the bridge. He was not killed, he was severely wounded and he died two weeks later. Uh, we had hopes for it to be put kind of in a flower bed or that are, where there are also seating areas around of the big. Uh, chrome bowl, uh, there at McLean and Douglas. All of these things took place near those intersections. I just wanna know when you wanna do this because the plaques are in my garage.
All right, I love it. Oh, I guess I have a couple of questions and Nate and Reggie, you guys might be able to answer something. Uh, so are we, um, motioning to move forward with the installation of the plaques and then? Uh. Mary Lou mentioned we, uh, we're responsible for the foundation that goes into getting the plaques in place. How does that work? Or how's it worked?
So, uh, when they originally reached out, uh, we just spoken with the mayor, we were about looking for a new location for it that was there. And we, and part of that because it would be potential park land has come here for seeing if they're endorsed to move forward. So it's my understanding that the plaque will come, but not the installation or the support for actually putting it in would come, so.
So we would install it?
We would have to install it.
Okay.
Move forward with approving it being there at the location, is that accurate?
Yeah.
So, and we're bringing it, uh, Mayor Wood brought to our attention to see if it's something that we can bring to Park Board to review and see if we're supportive of.
Except this long, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Waiting till good weather is not a problem.
Sure.
They are new plastic colored that looks like France.
Okay.
Not so that it doesn't, they're about this, about this.
Okay.
Um, that way they're less desirable to steal. Only that, you've cemented a man, makes it pretty tough.
There you go. So.
Are there any concerns, uh, with vandalism or damage to them itself and then replacing them?
If something happens, only if.
Yeah, I don't have that. It sounds like this is something we've done in the past in partnership, so I don't, I don't have an issue with it. Y'all have questions?
Other than an estimate of what it's gonna take.
Uh, we won't know that until we get further along and I know if you're maybe adjusting general oversight of whatever costs. You know, similar projects in the past, but I don't foresee it being a substantial cost.
Okay, that's substantial is different. People, uh, thousand, ten thousand?
Uh, I don't think it'll be that, uh, to do that, not for three signs, actually put in just the base for it and put in a lot of the work. Internal.
Some cost basically.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thanks.
Probably know this, put it up, this is all probably done by Cal Town or the.
Greenway Alliance, they must, the Greenway Alliance were the ones who helped, had them made and, and, uh.
Hey, Annika, are you staying till five?
Yeah.
Would you be available to close the building at four if this park board meeting that my boss called me at two thirty to come join at three? Okay.
And if you're on video, can you mute yourself please because we can hear you?
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
We link it to our webpage when there's a event or something to notify about it.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Park Board is treating.
Yeah. Really great. Wonder how quickly we could get them put in place and be a part of our process or something like that. Acknowledged.
And we'll work through it, uh, once the weather gets nicer as well to see what we need to do, move forward and of course walk with you to see what locations you have in mind on it. And give an update before we do the installation.
We've, we've kind of walked through it a number of times, but, you know, I. Pretty much the circumstances are pretty well settled down in that now.
So Nate, do we just need a, a vote of support?
Yeah, I think that's probably the best way to frame it. I'm not sure if this is like park board property, so it's not like a strict approval. I think support is definitely, that's pretty encompassing language.
Yeah, I would, um, I would move forward, uh, I would make a motion to support the installation of the plaques, uh, provided by the Greenway Alliance, uh, in recognition of. That Rowdy Joe and the gunfight, running at the Doves and Rowdy Joe and the Redbeard downtowns. Got a motion in a second? Uh, any further questions? Okay. All of the favor? All right. All of the suppose, same sign? We got you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you for working with you and.
Sometime in the spring and make it happen.
Yes.
Thank you, Mary Lou, appreciate it. Okay, next, uh, we've got Paul Gunselman to present on the K ninety six expansion. Thank you, Reggie. Thank you, Nate.
Yes, thank you. Paul Gunselman, City Engineer. Wanted to provide you an update on the K ninety six improvement project, the, uh, different misimpact findings. I believe, uh, WSB has presented this project to you, oh, sometime last year. And we were, um. Going through the process of getting the de minimis finding approved by City Council, however. Uh, some funding impacts have been changed on the K ninety six project. Um. And, uh, KOD has, uh, provided us some additional information at this time, uh, that we believe it's that we can move forward with it to go to City Council. Uh, in essence, the, uh, this was the overall project, Kansas Department of Transportation, it's designing improvements from I one thirty five, uh, to. In essence, to the East Kellogg improvements where they coordinate together. They were going into this project, they had, uh, presented it as a, as a project as a whole. Uh, for design and construction, um, due to some of the transportation program and, and projects that they have already underway. Um, funding is short. Um, some additional information they provided here in recent months is that they believe that, uh, they still want to participate in the project. However, will be done in phases, uh, most likely with. The, um, Woodlawn and Rock Interchanges be in the first phase, followed by that section between I one thirty five. Um, Hillside and Oliver Interchange and then the Web Interchange and then further south. The, uh, proposed footprint of the project will affect, uh, the three parks and one trail along this project limits. That is the K ninety six lake park, the two Chisholm Creek parks, north and south of, uh, K ninety six, as well as K ninety six bike trail. Federal Highway Administration conducted a study of four impacted parks, park properties. Um, FHWA report finds that the unavoidable, unavoidable impacts would be considered de minimis impact under Section four F, which is Department of Transportation Act. A Section four F de minimis impact involves a minor use, Section four F protected resource, and after taken into account avoidance, minimization, mitigation, enhancement measures results in no adverse affected activities. Features or attributes qualifying a park recreation area or refuge for protection under four F. KOD is seeking concurrence of this finding from the city of Wichita. And I am, like I said, we were. Prepared to go to City Council, I think, last October, however, due to the funding, um, changes that we had asked City Council to hold. Taking any action on this, that we got additional, additional information from KOD for the project. How some of these, uh, how the product affects these areas, the K ninety six lake park, uh, point eight acres of the forty six will be affected by the new interchange ramps. Uh, between K ninety six and I one thirty five. And going into a little bit more detail on one of the affected areas is, um, the red line, um, on the. On slide before you indicates the, uh, where the existing fence is at this time. Uh, the existing right away. Is that hatch line here? And then the, um. The purple line is the, uh, new, um, right away acquisition and then where the new fence line would be, so. In the photo, the fence line would be moving a little bit towards the lake area. Again, we wanted to make sure that there would still be enough room between the fence and the water that Morris could maintain that area, and that is the case. Chisholm Creek Park, uh, the north and south of K ninety six along the, uh, east side of Woodlawn, west side of Woodlawn. Uh, one point three acres of fifty seven, um, acres on the north side will be affected by the construction of the new interchange at Woodlawn. And a portion of this is the gravel parking lot, which will be reconstructed in the general facility of the project. To the south, approximately one point acre, one point eight acres of the two hundred and eighty two will be affected by the new interchange. And the amenity that will be affected is the K ninety six bike trail. And a little bit closer of the, uh, south, uh, area of the park, the gray, um, area. Is the, uh, existing path, uh, we're likely on this screen. And then the, uh, the blue, dark blue is where the, the path will be rerouted and the extension of the box there as well. And that would be the effect on, uh. Again, connecting the paths together with the project. And then the, uh, K ninety six bike trail, east of Web Road, uh, you can see. Uh, the existing one ramp, off ramp, so, uh. From eastbound K ninety six to Web Road is here. And then existing on ramp to go eastbound K ninety six. Uh, with the path or the bike trail coming down the west side of Woodlawn that crosses at the intersection. And then you can see the path is just on the north side of this, uh, area there. Um, the changes would include a new archer, eastbound ramp to go to northbound Web Road, which would not go for signal and longer. And then the new eastbound on ramp is moved to the south as well. And the eastbound line with the, uh, residential street, and this will be signalized, so the path will be reconstructed. Uh, from twenty ninth to Web Road. South on the west side of Web Road crosses that signalized intersection and then this blue light represents the new path connection as well. Um, taking that just a little bit off, you know, taking the area off, you can see the gray again where the existing, uh, path is moving it south. Still there. Um, towards the K ninety six, so. Uh, out of the eight miles of the trail length, approximately one third of a mile will be affected about. Five hundred feet located east of Web Road, temporary plus reconstruction due to the starting. That's what I mentioned before, so. Those are the, uh, considerations for the project concurrence with the de minimis finding will not have a financial impact on the city. Uh, KOD will continue to coordinate the city Wichita's project progresses, most likely in phases, which will include. A negotiation and acquisition process of the land that is required. Compensation negotiated through KOD's acquisition process for a farm and trail property is not impacted by a de minimis finding by the aviation. And with that, that is my last slide, so I can try and answer any questions. I am, uh, this is, this, the de minimis finding is scheduled to go to City Council Tuesday, January twenty first. And I'll go through a similar presentation as well as, uh, let them know that the updated information is that the project will be constructed most likely in phases. With, uh, those phases and, and this needs to be, uh, completed. Prior to KOD moving forward with the project for environment clearance. Uh, so we're kind of holding them up on this, but we wanted to hold them up to get additional information once the project had changed a little bit, so. Uh, once City Council takes action on this, then that helps KOD move forward with, uh. Completing the environment clearance and begin, uh, right with that.
Questions? So. You know if KOD's gonna have any signage, uh, in advance to prepare? The community to. Change their routes?
I'm sure they will, we will continue to work through KOD on that, you know, we've got some improvements as well, uh. We've got some funding to get into the week a little bit to, uh, get some fiber and communication cables along the east twenty first street corridor from I one thirty five to. Butler County line, Sett County line, knowing that while this project is going, there could be some traffic that gets rid of down to twenty first street and avoid K ninety six, and we're trying to prepare for that. But yes, uh, information would get out, um. You know, we didn't want to have two interchanges under, adjacent interchanges under construction at the same time, so this phase it kind of helps that as well, so yes, we will, we will. Closely work with KOD, yeah, the, the design engineers and have very size in place that.
Trees, there is probably a lot of trees along K ninety six, the north edge, they're probably not great trees, trash trees or something. Um, same as along both the south edge of Chisholm Creek North and the north edge of Chisholm Creek South. That there's hedge rows or I know there's a lot of cedars through there, but I'm probably have to come down, come out. And so on placement.
I, yeah, um, I don't know that I have that close information right now, but I'll sure make sure that we can keep those.
We have a policy about that now.
We do, that was came into effect in late last year, yes, yes, we do, yes. And they are aware of that.
Um, thank you, Tom.
The accessibility to the north end of the park, uh, when it was first presented, I think it showed that there wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to turn left into the existing parking, is that still the case?
I don't recall off the top of my head on that, and I don't have that plan sheet here, but yeah, I remember that, um. Cause thirty fourth is signalized there as well. But yeah, I, I, I recall meeting in there, but I don't recall our apartment, but yeah.
It's still the case.
Still the case.
Headed south.
Okay. Oh, thi- this is Tim Callum's.
Yes.
Yes, uh, you will no longer be able to make a left into Chisholm Creek Park North if you're going northbound. It'll be a right in, right out.
Will you, will you provide signage for those that are northbound that want to go into the park?
Um, that's something that we'd have to work with, uh, KOD with, but yes, I think that's something that, that could be made or done, uh, to do that, to help, uh. Let people know, but, um, the stacking that is required for that intersection is just too long and then trying to manage. How people are getting in and off of K ninety six, it just, uh, became clear early on, uh, for KOD that that just wouldn't, wouldn't work.
Yeah, and Tim, have you, I know you're working on improvements to that park, has that been shared with WSB? Or is it too early yet for that?
Yes, we are, um, working with WSB, uh, KDOT as well as, uh, Kansas, uh, Department of Wildlife and Parks. They are reviewing it because we have a grant to make that improvement to the, uh, Chisholm Creek Park North, so we are, we are all working together. Uh, James Wagner has been involved with those conversations as well as part of the staff.
Well, can you, uh, do you know how far down, like, will there, will there be like a U-turn or how will northbound drivers be able to access that part?
Um, I'm not totally sure at this point, um, you know, I think that, um, you'll be able to turn into Dillon's. Um, I know we don't necessarily like encouraging U-turns and whatnot, I don't know what the proper, uh, or legal maneuver would need to be if you're going northbound to get in there. Um, I know that, um, I don't think that it's gonna be heavily programmed, um, for that park compared to Chisholm Creek Park South. Um, so hopefully it's more of a, uh, people learn that, uh, you can't make a left there, it's better to just get off, uh, on a different. Exit to get there, uh, but I don't think it'll be too, too troublesome, I think there'll be ways to, to turn around.
I don't think we can plan on people learning about it. Um, I, I know a lot of folks use it to, as their landing spot for their biking and things like that, so. Um, I would encourage us to think of a better solution than just people are gonna learn about it. Uh, you're gonna get a lot of feedback on that.
They, are you talking about Chisholm Creek Park North or Chisholm Creek Park South?
Yeah, no, north. North, I mean, I know that when this was presented to us last, the very first time, that was a big, that was something that I remember folks were. Um, concerned about not being able to access that part, turning left onto it.
Okay, um, I, that's something that we're gonna have to work with KOD with, but in my conversation with them, they're pretty adamant that that would not be possible for them to have a left turn into that parking lot.
Oh, that's fine, I just, I don't think them turning into Dillon's or just learning about it is the solution, is what I'm saying.
And that's why we asked Amanda to be on the line as well, so I know that's part of when Tom went and did the site visit there and we talked with some of the users of the park. Part of what we plan on doing is getting that education piece out to users that, uh, there to use the trail so they'll know what the access is, so it's not a surprise for them once we start doing. So leading up to those developments, we'll be communicating that as well and the men will be able to share that through her team also.
You have other, y'all have other questions? Um, Nate, what are we looking at here? Or is it just the update?
Well, and as I understand it, and it's not just, I, I, I think it's more just, uh.
Well, and as I understand it, and it's not just, I, I, I think it's more just a recommendation rather than any kind of specific approval. And, um, I, I believe that, but I'll kind of leave it more.
Yeah.
Not necessarily my part of the business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, I appreciate it.
I'll take your comments back, but I think that's kind of, yeah, I think, yeah.
An update. Okay.
Alright, I'll be presenting this to, uh.
Do you have a timeline of which phases are going to go first? Is it, is it, I'm assuming ninety-six to one thirty, one thirty-five to ninety-six and then work east from there?
Uh, so. As it is right now, um. And we're still working through some details of KDOT, but, uh, regarding the amount of funding that could be available for this. To begin phases, uh, right now, there might be approximately a hundred million dollars. Um, and. City and county would participate in local match, but what they are, based on traffic counts and crashes. Um, they are looking at woodline and rock interchanges to be first. And then would skip over to the west, um, to work on this section. And then there would be the, uh, Web Road interchange and then further south, you know, green, which has been improved here recently. One of the first things that they'll do is, is start the right away acquisition for, um. First two phases and that would probably include the Web Road interchange as well, um. City has a fire station right there itself, so that is impacted, um, we really need to know, you know, so we can start looking at relocation. Um, and then, you know, depending on whether there's other funding, there might be some interim improvements at some of these interchanges prior to it, but. Um, it's not ideal that we want it, you know, we'd rather see the whole thing built long, but, uh, funding's not allowing that, so looking at phases. But it'd start with rock and web, and you know, I think if you get rock, rock approved, I think that could give some relief off of Web Road. Vice versa, it might, you know, give some relief and then, uh, work on these others.
Is that this year or multi-year?
It'll be a multi-year program, um. I don't have those, the funding with me. Um, but they will, like I say, we'll, we'll continue to work with KDOT on this. Um, part of it, you know, it gets work finished on the north portion as well. But, uh. I, I could follow up with you on some dates, don't forget those.
Thank you, Paul, appreciate that, Dave.
Good, thank you.
Hey, uh, we've got, next we got Brandon with the finance update.
Good afternoon, I have a really good update, there is no updates. Uh, we're still waiting on the, uh, the close of the year and so basically that'll close on this Friday on the seventeenth. Uh, today was like the last day we can get invoices paid, uh, or submitted for, for payments, um. Then when the invoices were received, uh, in January, that should be paid for, be using twenty nine four months. So it just says, this is a timing thing, and so by, by Friday, we should be closed, and we should know where we finish out. I'm really optimistic, I, what, this was a good year. Uh, next, uh, both revenue and expenditure wise for the parks department. Um, so now we're looking more towards next year's budget. So I will have a, a update in February about where we ended the year, so other than that, that's pretty much as well. Thanks, guys.
Brad, do you have any recommendations?
That's, that's a little follow-up from, uh, Brandon, one of the things that we do, uh, next month, I've asked him to look at giving a close out of where we were for last year. And we're having budget meetings with all of our center directors to look at budget for this year, any projections, so that we can be ahead of what we need to do planning for. The year, so it's not any surprises for us. And then the other update I have is our position for poor community center closes on the twentieth. Uh, so I'll be reaching out, uh, about, uh, representation on the panel. And, uh, since I speak, uh, one, uh, so we're looking at getting, uh, a lot of feedback from both internally and some. People from the community to be involved in it and our focus is going to be on someone who can come in and look at that space and. Reactivate it, make sure they're engaged in the community as well as having experience and. Uh, expanding from a ten thousand square foot facility to a thirty thousand square foot facility, so. We're looking for someone that's going to have experience to be able to come in and do that and make sure they, uh, keep the community engaged as we move forward. So those are the two biggest things that we're going to be working on and, um, planning to, uh, reach out to the committee here pretty soon. I had Alex send over the, uh, interview questions today to HR as well as the proposed panel, then we'll confirm moves available. The goal is to try to have someone, uh, on board, uh, right around, uh, uh, spring break time for me to start planning for opening in early fall.
Do you have an update or anything on the, uh, our park director, Artan Serge?
Uh, position close on this past Friday, the tenth, uh, so I'm not sure what the next steps will be on the process from there. Uh, and then they'll start discussing interviews and everything from there to determine what the next steps should be.
Will, uh, will the park board be invited to participate in those interviews too?
I would recommend reaching out to say that, uh, you would like to be involved in it, so we can cast a representation in there and, uh. And, uh, HR, manager's office would be the one that's helping coordinate that, uh. We've had some, uh, interest from some other groups that wants to be involved, but the representation from, uh. The, uh, golf committee has reached out saying that they would like to be involved, so I think if you guys want to have some.
Directly at Bob, okay.
Just reach out to Bob, just let him know that you're interested in having some representation that he can guide you from there.
Thank you.
So Perry, who's up for vote last week at council?
Yes, so we actually, uh, went through on, uh, with, uh, council last week on it and, uh, got approval to move forward to start activating the space. Uh, Tim is leading that project and we're able to also accept a donation that we got from the developer for a million dollars, that's going to be over multiple years. Uh, we've also worked with Fish and Wildlife where they've already started stocking the lake there to have it available for people to use it. Then the next phase is going to be getting access to it and then start developing the trailway system for that.
Will the sidewalk and, and what, parking lot be done this year, this spring, summer?
Tim's on, he, he would have an idea on the, uh, on the timeline on that, are you still on, uh, line, Tim? Locked off, but I know that that's part of, uh, that process is going to be making sure that that parking lot is available there and start working in the trail system for people to have access to.
Start an email chain, uh, I can start an email chain after the meeting, uh, with Mr. Ewer and Tim, if you would like. Go ahead and get you that answer.
Thank you. Is that what you got? Alright, thank you, appreciate it. Uh, Reggie, oh no, Katie, you're up. You're up, not yet. Got a TikTok?
So here are current, uh, follower counts for all of our social media pages. Didn't want to do a good overview to show what this past year did for our account. So most of the accounts did go up quite a bit in followers last year and just to note, these numbers are a compliment, it's just. Since I round for every meeting, uh, this was just a rounded number at the beginning of last year, first, right now. Um, but the winner is always Kansas Wildlife, that, that page with pages keeps exploding month after month, last month it did get about six hundred new followers. So over the course of the year, even if the thing broke, it was amazing, everywhere else is kind of, you know, ten to fifteen percent-ish.
So really good?
Yeah. So yeah, it's, it's a good sign that we're, we're still growing these pages, it's not like they're just stale pages, they're still new content, uh, new followers, it's just not really growing. Uh, the top post for the Witchon Park Recreation page last month was about a clap park, just this update photo. Where we can see the most equipment's in, we're just waiting, uh, for the winter to cooperate, so we can, it's, uh. Pouring the surfacing, uh, but that, that post, uh, reached sixty-five thousand people and there were almost four hundred interactions on it, so. Given that this is our slow period, that was, that was a really good post to keep the engagement going. Watson Park was, again, mostly about persons express, um, overall, the page. Content is a little bit down just because, again, we're in our slow period. After the park saw a lot of engagement surrounding Winter Wonderland, that's always one of the biggest events that goes on there every year. Um, but so that took the, the page, uh, reached up eighty-five percent from the previous launch. And then Golf Witch cause top post was, post about Tiger Woods and his achievements, um, and how he loves to share his passion with golf with kids, with his kids. And then we had a call to action to ask our community golfers to share their photos, memories, feedback on our page. And we had, that reached about six thousand people with two hundred and thirty-five interactions, so I thought that was cool. Just to kind of share a name that may be more of a household name, uh, to, to get people to share their own, their own feedback and their memories with this park. That's all I've got for you today, I don't have any questions.
Questions, Katie? Alright, thank you, Katie. Alright, Reggie.
So, uh, recreation, um, Katie mentioned a couple of them, Winter Wonderland was, uh, another one that was well attended this year. Uh, we were able to incorporate our Miracle League program into work with fire and actually brought. Some of our athletes from there that, uh, led the tree this year. Uh, had, uh, live music out there on site again as well, so we had a really good turnout for the event. Uh, continue to look at ways that we can expand and grow going into the next year. Uh, Watson Christmas Express, uh, we had the train up the entire time this year, so that made a big. Impact compared to the previous year when we had some challenges with the train with the maintenance, so that was up and well attended. Uh, we also had our programming for the fall, we had our rec centers with, uh, a lot of, uh, theme related activities that took place. Had a really good, uh, our end of the year, uh, event that we had on site there with our, our kids club was, uh, well attended. Had a lot of people out for it, it was a, uh, grants themed event, a lot of people attended that event, close to a hundred people were there for it. Uh, also had our fall camp, uh, that we had at Orchard, uh, Lead One and Edgemore Rec Center, so continue to grow those. Providing options for those parents, uh, during, uh, the winter break to have some childcare for, uh, for those women's schools out, so. And just preparing for the, uh, the spring and some of our projects that we have going on, it brought Garrett mentioned as well, so. Once the weather, uh, gets a little bit better, uh, the playgrounds that we've been working on will be opening up. And then we also had the opening for the new trail playground, uh, the Delanes. That is being a really good launch, we know. He's an actor, he's getting a lot of things out of the community for people who participate in.
I love it, thank you, Reggie. Uh, questions for Reggie in Recreation? Alright, Jesse, you're up, sir.
Good afternoon, through the numbers for December and for the entire year. Uh, rounds, we ended up about eight thousand down from last year, I don't want to keep repeating myself, but, uh. All they consider pretty happy with that, we did a hundred eighty thousand rounds, um, with Auburn and Tex, pretty much neck and neck at the top two courses. I think, uh, next year, the way, we had a nice little run of weather there at the end of December. And for four or five days to end the year, we were putting up numbers that were comparable to the summer day, so. Uh, yeah, I think we're, we're headed into a really big year if we can avoid the, the damage to the, to the grass like we had last winter, so far so good. Um, December rounds alone, we were up over a thousand rounds and, um. To, to do that, have an increase in a month like December is, is a very good bonus, so, uh, nearly eighty thousand rounds just in March, December. For our rentals, we ended up, uh, about ten, nine thousand dollars up over last year, um, and then of course with Tex being closed, you can see they were down twenty-eight thousand, so. Um, if everything would say, would have been normal, I think we probably would have been about thirty to forty thousand dollars up, uh, with the carbon also. Through November, we were nearly, we're two hundred and seventy dollars off last year, so almost dead even. Uh, again, with some closures, different things that had a big impact, the not being able to take credit cards for a month had a huge impact on this. Um, but we, we did see a big spike towards the end of the year, some of the good things that we were doing, so looking forward to carrying that over and we've done a lot of. At all the clubhouse, we put new digital menus up, uh, over the last month, um. Kind of got some new equipment to get everything ready to, to go to go for us next year. Driver range grew up forty thousand dollars over last year and about seventy thousand dollars up over twenty twenty-two. Uh, this was a, you know, area that definitely had a huge opportunity to grow and I think we. Now the problem is we've got to figure out how to maintain the driver ranges, the T-boxes, they get so beat up, so we were working on some plans. Uh, to put some new mats, possibly a couple of teaching centers at, at Tex and Auburn, we're. Exploring those ideas now, getting the cost, but, um, kind of excited to see if we can get that go through. Uh, the merchandise sales, uh, pretty close to last year, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, the, the debt would be at Auburn. Uh, just because we did not have a head throw there for several months and then Mike, when he came on, of course, he's not going to bring in a lot of the. The balls that have gone until spring of this year, so I'm pretty happy with that. Overall revenue, um, just in December, we did three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, that's compared to, I think, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand last year. The, for the year, um, we had six point six and a half million dollars come through CPS, so that's all the money that went through our registers and. Uh, through the online store. The, uh, last year, we did six point five, so we did a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar increase. Now, I just looked right before I got up here, in twenty twenty-two, we were at five point eight. And in twenty twenty-one, we were at five point four, so. In the last three years, we've increased over one point two million dollars, um, in revenue. So pretty, very, very happy with that, I think, again, we just, it's just going to continue to go trend upward. The, uh, project fund that we have, we, at the end of November, we were sitting at one point eight million, uh, so. Depending on how the expenses and everything shake out for December, uh, we should have around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will be transferred automatically into this project fund. Uh, but each, each of the four buckets that we have are, are all looking pretty healthy. Um, and then of course, as projects come up, we just move money from that general fund on the left into whatever bucket we need to use it in, so. Uh, pretty, pretty happy with, with where things are sitting right now, the irrigation project at Sim goes to council's final approval on Tuesday. Um, and then that work should start early next month, we're looking hopefully within about a three month, uh, start date, completion date, so. Uh, that's going to be probably the biggest thing that's happened since I've been here. Other than that, right now, we're kind of in the, the prep mode for next year, we do a lot of training. Putting together a lot of manuals for customer service, food handling, all the different areas we do, so, uh, get a lot more input on that. And just looking at different projects, we want to try and complete over the next two, three months and plans for twenty twenty-five, so a lot of that. Personally, I'm expecting my first kid any minute, like my phone's over there, so I'm going to go check it, so I can get it out. Yeah, once that happens, my plan, I'll take in about two weeks, uh, for trying to leave. Uh, I'll be back, uh, February first to keep things rolling, so. Any questions? Alright, thank you all.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I just wanted to say as well, um. Give kudos, Jesse's done a really good job for us and, and with the numbers that we have for this year, taking into consideration the timeframe that we had. With not having access to credit card, which is a big portion of how a lot of the fees are paid, it's still in a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars over. The growth we've had over the last three years shows a lot to leadership and what he's been doing there, so. Good job.
Thank you, Jesse. Alright, Gary. You're up, sir.
Don't have you on the agenda, but this is where you usually go, so.
Oh, go, yeah, I know where I'm not wanting. I don't know where your name went, I don't know what happened.
Won't blame it on Alex, but he's trying to sabotage me.
We needed to give you a good entrance. Us going.
Well, uh, four street, as I click off of that program.
I got you, I got you.
So, uh, we want to fix this.
Search word.
Yeah.
Let me, let me drive just a little bit more. Thanks.
I don't know if the buttons on the keyboard here. So, four street is about the same, if this will change, it's not changing. Do you need the drive?
Can't drive for you.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, um. Production overall, I'm considering the, uh, vacation days and holidays, things like that, uh, not. Not spiking, not did, so production is about the same, I go ahead, uh, our. Lucid is, uh, constant because we're just always trying to maintain our, our database. And, and we did wind up, uh, providing firewood for Winter Wonderland, Christmas express and things like that, so. Uh, that, that's one of the things that we do.
So uh, that, that's one of the things that we do since firewood happened. It's important for your business. Um, again, like I said, Forest Street's not really exciting this time of year, other than just our emergency responses and, and things like that. We try to keep going with our high priority uh removals. And um I was met with, uh, with the arborist this uh past week. We've talked about some um adjustments in how we categorize and how we approach what we're doing and when we're doing it, and just trying to streamline things to ensure that we're giving the public the best service that possible can. So uh, we're just trying to continually get better. Uh, the tree removal contract uh that is going to be done by a private vendor, uh that begins, uh it's the work orders have been released, so uh that should begin this month. There's about five hundred and fifteen trees total in that contract. Uh, that represents about a third of our overall tree removal backlog.
Is this money, the ones that are already dead or?
They are dead, dead, dying. The, these are, do not represent hazardous trees. Those we would help uh keep in-house and do on a much tighter timeline.
Um, any of, any trees that are, like are people, are we notifying folks, you know, and as I know?
We do, and so the process behind that is uh when we, uh, because we already have the trees identified in a specific area. So when we go ahead of the contractor, we put a card on the door and mark the tree obviously with paint.
Yeah.
So that there is zero question for the contractor, instant contractor, from the time we painted, they have two weeks to cut it down by this time. So that, keep that timeframe from publicly identifying the tree uh as this is a removal to the time it's down is a very narrow window. Are those mostly on park property, not street trees? Mostly street trees. Mostly street trees. Yes. Okay, construction, special projects, there's quite a bit on here as, as per usual. Uh, the pic, the two top pictures, uh that is going to be uh Bridgeport, I almost forgot the name. Um, there was a lot of illegal activity happening in the Bridgeport parking lot. Uh, there's a fairly unprogrammed uh piece of ground, I C D Farms came in. They started their operation there this past year. And uh at night, weekends, uh weekends at night, uh lawnmower donuts happening in the parking lot, climate fire, that kind of thing. So PD asked us to figure out how we could limit access to the parking lot. So there was two entrances, we just barricaded one uh concrete block, you can even walk in, but you can't drive in. And the other section is uh gated. And so when there's programming, that gate will be open. Uh, when there's not programmed, uh it's still open to access via walking in. But we're hoping that's going to limit some of the illegal activity that, that happens. So uh, that, that project was completed in December. Uh, we used the gates, the physical gates, the pipe gate is what it's called uh from the Oliver entrance at Chisholm Creek South. Uh, because an automatic gate is going in there. So, and that is to address some safety concerns that are happening at night there. So the automatic gate that is at the uh twenty-ninth street entrance to uh G P N C, a very similar, almost identical gate is going on the west side there on Oliver. So all these things, we're trying to work it together uh and utilize the resources that we have uh like those gates. So uh, got that uh done, installed the bollards uh that needed to be done, so pay with them to drive around the gates. Um, all of the engineered uh wood fiber that will be bought last year has now been spread. Uh, all the different parks that we put are on this list here that you can read. Um, we have removed a significant amount of graffiti, the parts of their skyline, Asher, Chisholm Creek, Creek Plains, Boston, Phil's Hall, probably more. Go ahead. Um, so the bundles got to our picnic tables there at Henry, we set those back up. Uh, it's just silly things that we have to do to, that takes our time away from real work. But uh, you know, if you're the park user, you expect the table to be upright. So we took care of that. Uh, we've replaced some swings. Uh, wanted specifically to call out uh Jason Hale. He's been an employee with us for a lot of years, but uh he successfully passed his certified playground safety inspector exam in December. And so he is our new CPSI. And uh, that follows his transitioning to a new position for us. And uh, so we're really proud of him and uh expect great things out of him. And he, so he's going to be in charge of the majority of our uh playground inspections. And so uh, to keep up with regulation and things like that, we need to have that certifications. Good, good job, Jason. Um, all of all that, same work at Evergreen. That's down, uh a lot of these, a lot of the things on this page are just prep for winter, like uh the, the bottom wall there. Remove the fabric fade, sail tops, that was hard to say. Uh, A, for our harvest pools, uh in Murph and Dock Park, those uh tops, those shaped structures were not snow rated when they were installed. So we have to remove those each year and then in the spring we'll put them back up. Uh, we provided uh picnic tables for Winter Wonderland and Asher Park. And then also picnic tables for uh the river event at Delano Park. Uh, a lot of things scheduled in January. Uh, it's cold, but we still have a lot to do. Um, one of the things I wanted to point out is the fabrication of the poly cart bollard prototype. Uh, we are, when we distribute the poly carts to the trash cans in, in the parks, a lot of times we don't have anything to attach to. Uh, so what we want to try to do is standardize a bollard that we can manufacture in-house. We could purchase it, but we believe right now that we can manufacture it in-house cheaper. And then customize it too, so we could have a single station or a multitude of stations, depending on how many poly carts are, are supposed to be there. So we're going to give it a shot, see how it works and uh then put it into practice. And if that is successful, we will duplicate that throughout the system uh as, as we can, both from a financial standpoint as well as uh from a employee time and availability standpoint for the manufacturer of this prototype. But I think that they'll look nice, uh and it will give that stationary uh place for those poly carts and give them a, a permanent home, so they're not getting chained to a tree or uh no parking sign or something like that. So I think it'll look better, looks more parks and uh it'd be better. Uh, another fabrication is uh snow pile blades from the Hustler uh snow pile attachments. Uh, those are old enough now that the replacement blades are not available on the market. And so instead of trying to upgrade and spend a lot more money, we're trying to just uh fabricate those in-house. I think we're being successful doing that. Uh, we have some uh sign installations and then uh playground inspections are ongoing all the time, every month, and then graffiti and maintenance. So the park maintenance, um I wanted to really focus on uh getting you guys up to date on the refuse. Uh, and remember, when you look at this, that our full-time staff or refuse is comprised of two people. And in the summertime, we have two uh seasonal staff. So part of the year we have four, but with the whole year, we have two right now. Uh, at least as far as this date is concerned. Uh, hundred and two thousand, one hundred and ninety-three containers were empty this last year. That's a lot of containers for two people, some of those were. Uh, it's ten thousand more than twenty twenty-three. Uh, just shy of four hundred tons of refuse were collected. And that's sixty-four tons, almost sixty-five tons more than uh twenty twenty-three. Uh, we participated in two neighborhood cleanups, which was an additional twenty-seven tons. Uh, illegal dumping is uh always a major issue. Two thousand illegal dumping sites uh utilizing just shy of seventy-five percent of a full-time employee uh in terms of hours, and that's four hundred more sites than in twenty twenty-three. Uh, seven hundred and sixty-four tires, a hundred and eighty-one mattresses, refrigerator and a parking lot in a parish tree. So just a couple of pictures of the illegal dumping that we see. Uh, more illegal dumping and, and there's no, like the poly cart that's on the picture on the right. I think that's chained to that sign. I think it would look much better if we had a poly cart bollard. Uh, may never actually even see the poly cart bollard unless you were looking for it. But it's not designed to be flashy, it's just designed to be functional. So uh, we'll be able to move that away from that sign. But this is just an example of A, illegal dumping and B, uh, a function of not having the capacity to visit these sites as often as we need to. Uh, every time we add a new uh cart, like when we, when we opened uh the Chisholm Creek Parkway, did I get that right? Chisholm Trail Parkway, thank you. Chisholm Trail Parkway, uh we added more trash containers to be emptied. We have to take, you know, aluminum service elsewhere in the system to accommodate for that, just because we're at a hundred percent capacity. So this is just one of the, the vast majority of this is illegal dumping, but uh go ahead. Uh, and then I just wanted to also talk about the itinerary and cleanup crew and the work that we did in December to prepare for where we are at today. Um, and there was a lot of work committed to it. Um, we have uh successfully hired three of the full positions that uh are on that four-person cleanup crew. Um, and the fourth position is in the interview process. Uh, we've developed standard operating procedures uh for our staff in terms of uh material handling as well as when the new ordinance was passed, we uh developed standard operating procedure for impounding and returning any impounded uh property. Um, we're preparing places, uh a place for that uh property to be stored and secured. Uh, so there was just a lot of uh prep work that went into us being able to do our part of what is a multi-step process before it ever gets to park for a cleanup. Uh, and the, the multi-steps handle the interaction and the humanity of uh interacting with the unhoused. And so that all happens before we get the call for a site cleanup. So that being the case, we are live, we are good to go. Um, we have set everything up in our system to be able to report. Uh, and just about at a moment's notice, what the numbers are, what the timeframe is, what the expenditures are. Uh, because like we know that this is very much in the spotlight. So uh, that is my presentation. I stand for questions.
So if you had a magic wand and you say, no, because I'll go to my seat, if you need more trash people, that's what we're here for, is to go to our C M members and say, Gary needs more trash people. So how can we, how can we support?
Each year we ask for more and each year we don't get it. Um, what we did get for the twenty twenty-five budget year is we did get two positions from uh Public Works that is being transferred over. Also, we are getting that route. So we are not gaining a ton of efficiencies there, but with that new route and with those additional positions, uh, we are certainly going to be analyzing any which way possible we can create an efficiency. So that's, that is absolutely on the table for twenty twenty-five. We're uh, but basically park has encapsulated a hundred percent of all city refuse collection.
What would be the ideal number of people to have on that team? And then obviously, in a perfect world, this group doesn't exist, right? But yeah.
Um, if you need it for you, say we can, could you give a little bit too, then I'll take your little slide. And when I had my meeting with C M Ho High, so I was like, we need to get Gary some more trash people. So if we can get that added into the following year budget?
Yeah.
I'll keep pushing it for you. Pushing my trash pick up, so.
It is, it is, and I, I I want to raise your attention. Uh, because it is a lot to do and, and to answer your question, uh, what would a ideal crew be? Um, I think a ideal crew for a city this size with as much refuse as we have to pick up because there are a lot we don't do. Um, I would say a minimum crew size would be around ten full-time employees uh on that crew uh with all the equipment that goes along with it. You have two trash trucks, right?
Correctly.
The two new ones.
Yeah. And we're getting one from Public Works.
One from Public Works. Each one of those is a two-person crew. You, you said you had four positions, but two are temporary summer. So two, two full-time employees, one running a truck. Then when we get the seasonal positions, they come along and assist those two drivers. One driver can run a truck and do a, I assume that's safe, I mean. Yeah, I mean, they, they don't. It's just a lot of work. So maybe they pull up to a site like a previous slide and they have to get out, go load and, you know. I, I've seen them over at Chisholm Creek. Yeah, I appreciate what you did up at uh your, I mean, whatever. Hammers. Yeah, I don't think we're finished there. Uh, but I don't think the snow got us. Uh, we've um, I haven't got a report that we're finished. So I know that we've been doing quite a bit of work up there, especially to the west and leaving the east side along the street. Uh, what is that, our pants? Uh, we were leaving that for the very last, uh, so that when we, when we do that, our previous work really isn't housed. Yeah, the bollards help with access, which is general, but having mowed the whole thing, it makes anybody can drive right around. Yes, so that's a, that's an ongoing, ongoing, yeah.
Other, other, uh, Public Works has trash trucks also?
They did, they did. In twenty twenty-four, we inherited the trash truck and the two positions.
Okay.
And so that will be added to our current two.
So Public Works no longer picks up trash?
Zero. Did you give a name to their truck? Uh, we haven't yet. We haven't yet. Um, I don't know if it's going to be Old Faithful or.
We gotta get creative because the snow trucks are really.
The snow trucks are awesome. Have you got Maverick and Ranger or four of the other ones? I thought Maverick, I thought it was Maverick Goose, but I don't remember what the other two trucks are.
Yeah.
That's fun.
If you will share that with me, I, I, my next meeting with my cast member, I, I will take this and I will discuss it with you.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I'll answer any questions via email that you have. Um, but yeah, I mean, we, we are limited in our, in our capacity currently, and there's so much more that we could do. Yeah, years ago, when we would send our refuse crew out, they would spend time picking up trash in the park on the way to the poly cart or the, the, what it, the receptacle. Now it's a dead run to get there, get to the truck and move to the next one. If there's litter, they just don't have time to take care of it. And it, it has an impact overall on our parks. And so uh, I appreciate the work the guys do. I know you guys do too. Um, but we our city's growing. We've got more people, more, more spaces coming online. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Gary.
And I want to add on to that as well is um, uh, with the winter weather that we've had, uh, the same team has been out clearing parking lots and getting everything there for us to be the access space. So when some of our facilities were closed, they were up at five-thirty in the morning, making sure they were prepared. So once we opened it, they had clear way. So that's Public Works team as well as our parks team. So that's a lot of things that's done behind the scene that people may not realize that we collaborate with the, the Public Works to make sure that we have safe spaces for people when they come to use our facility. So kudos to Gary and his team. We uh, they ran some really long days last week, so.
Right. That'll be on next month's report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reggie. All right, uh Doug, you're up, sir. How's the Park Foundation doing?
Uh, be good. I uh, they just approved a marketing plan. They're, they know there's a lot of uh competition now for funds for tags. Uh, but they still had three hundred and eighty-some thousand.
But they still had three hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars from last year from Tag, Wichita Tags. So they're starting a marketing campaign to keep up that up. Lindeman Collecting is who they're going with. Other than that, they've got some projects that they're working on, sitting in the very early stages that could either tick off or not. So they're not making it public. Other than that, that's, that's all I have.
Do you know, and this might be out of, they might have not reported it, but I heard that there was gonna, they were gonna start allowing the Wichita flags to be customized?
Yes.
Do you know if that's out this year already?
Think so, I think it was supposed to be first of the year.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, yeah. So I want to get one of those.
There you go. Thank you, Doug.
Yeah.
I don't have a president's update. I'm just excited for this year. We've got a lot of exciting momentum, changes, hiring a new director, continuing with the strategic planning process for the park. So we'll keep on it.
I don't really have anything else to add, other than they worked really hard, closed up the year and transitioned. So really rallied behind to make sure that we keep things moving forward in the rest. Great team that we've deleted is going to have a good room to work with, continue to make impact in the community.
With that, I think our meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good job. Bye. We didn't have too much. That's awesome. Yeah.
Canada stick. Let's personally lead us forward.
Yeah, just let me know when, and this is for the.
This is for our center.
Let me know what, what the date is and I'll make that time.
We're looking at, it closes next Monday, so we're looking at either we start to have to get it independent, we boss out here, we want to make sure they can get here. Things moving along with the project as well, so we should be getting.
Oh, yeah.
Here along.
I drove past it today, it looks great.
Getting some of the foundation and stuff up.
I know, I was like, man.